I'd like to call the Monday, May 15, 6:30 PM, public hearing to order. This public hearing is for Council Order 2023-039A-E, grant of locations, National Grid, Verizon, Mass. dot C Street, Road Improvement Project. At this point, I'd like to ask anyone wishing to speak in favor or opposition to come to the podium, state your name and address. If you do not wish to speak but would like your support or opposition recorded, please sign in on the table at the back of the chamber. I want to mention that the Clerk of Committees received two written correspondences for this item. Cisuk Cheng and Ching Lam Cheng, homeowner at 322 C Street, who requested that the "No Parking Anytime" sign currently in front of the 332 C Street be maintained in its current location. This request will be made part of the record and has been shared with Ward 1 City Councilor and Traffic and Parking Department. A second was Paul Masters, property owner of 468, 470 C Street, is the C Street project and does not give permission to move the pole located in the backyard of his property. So at this time, is there anybody who would like to speak? Oh, you can jump in. First, we'll let them, because before you let in, we're not going to vote on this this evening. Okay.
Yeah, I just want to explain. I know a lot, Dave McCarthy, Ward 1 Councilor. Thank you, Councilor, for letting me speak. I know a lot of notices went out to C Street on the C Street project, which is run by the State Department of Transportation, that'll probably kick in sometime next year. And I saw an appraisal letter, and it confused me a little bit. And I got phone calls from not only the two points of contact that Councilor Harris just talked about, but other folks that had more questions. So this will not be coming out tonight in regards to any approval. I want to take a step back, take a look at C Street again, all the way down, and just make sure people understand what's going on a little bit more. And if we have pole issues, driveway issues, take a harder look at that. So I just want to say that we're not going anywhere with this tonight, but I wanted to let Councilor Harris at least open it up and explain what this is about tonight. And we can either go on, Bill, and have folks come up and say a few words, whatever you want to do, but I know we're not going to do anything tonight. I'm going to take another look at all of C Street, because it runs from Ginger Betty's all the way down to Palmer Street. And I'd like to get a good look at all the pieces of property that are really going to be affected or on the moves that are going to be affected.
So, very good. Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
But I'm sure folks came here. Why don't we at least have the public hearing, and it's already then in record, and then we can work forward from there? I think it's probably the best move. So if there's anybody who is in opposition or in favor, would you please come up to the podium? Okay.
John, order fail 62 Ground Wall Roads. I'm in favor of this. We doing new construction in the city. We need new telephone poles. They're redoing seawalls down there, so whatever. We need new utilities. We need new electric. We need new cable services, so this is a good idea. I just kind of wanted to use a quick personal privilege. Today is my parents' 57th anniversary, May 25. I want to wish them happy anniversary. I love both of them.
All right, John. Very good. Happy anniversary to your parents. Very good. Anybody else would like to speak?
Hello, Christine Cody, 297 C Street. I would appreciate Council McCarthy's willing to pull together our meeting. I feel we had an original meeting waiting for COVID, and we haven't heard anything until we got our assessment letters in the mail a week ago. So I really think it's time to take a step back and get us more information. In addition, the letter that you wrote about the telephone thing was really not in English. I couldn't tell whether it was in my, was the telephone pole in front of my house or my next-door neighbor's house. So I think you just need to give a little bit more details and notices and all of that. But I think right now, the way it stands, I understand we need telephone poles, but we also need to be respectful of people's properties. And with the proposal to widen C Street, I really just think we need a lot more information so that we understand our impact. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Okay, seeing no further public comment, and before I close it again, this will not be coming out of committee tonight. And so I will close the public hearing at 6:36, and we'll go immediately into the council meeting. Present de bono, it's all yours.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. The Quincy City Council meeting, Monday, May 15, 2023. It is now 6:37 PM. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilor Andronico.
Present.
Councilor Kane.
Present.
Councilor Devine.
Present.
Councilor Harris.
Present.
Councilor Yang.
Present.
Councilor Mahoney.
Present.
Councilor McCarthy.
Present.
Councilor Phelan.
Present.
President DeBona.
Present.
Nine members.
Nine members. We have a quorum. Please stand if you can. If we can get a moment of silence, please use it as you wish. Please turn to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please read the open meeting law.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and deemed acknowledged and permissible.
Before we get into our agenda items, I'd like to recognize a few individuals in here tonight. Our Quincy Public Schools Superintendent Kevin Mulvey, as well as Assistant Superintendent Erin Perkins up on the top shelf up there. It's really nice up there, isn't it? Also, Vice Chair of the School Committee Frank Santoro and School Committee Member Catherine Hoobley. I also like to recognize Quincy Firefighter Chief Joe Jackson sitting in the back. Thank you all the department heads that are in here tonight as well. First item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Number 1, 2023-046, appropriation fiscal 2024 general fund budget.
Mayor Tom Coke has the mic, and you have the floor, Mayor. Go right ahead.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the City Council. It's a pleasure to be here before you for our annual appropriation, essentially runs the operation, maintenance of the city for the fiscal year beginning July 1. Before I get started, I do want to just take a moment to thank each of the members of the council for all you do, the great cooperation that we have, great collaboration on so many things, not only in particular wards but citywide. I appreciate the advice and the counsel I get from each of you, and though we may not agree on everything, I think all our hearts in the right place, and we continue to move the city forward. So with that, I'm grateful, and let us begin. As any good budget would, we start with a stable foundation, and you see up on the screen some quotes from the S&amp;P ratings. As you know, each time we go to borrow money, they review every aspect of the city, and they rate us. Sometimes there's critical comments, sometimes there's positive comments. In any rate, the comments have been very positive. The ratings agencies are very happy with the policies, the procedures, and the strong economy that we are enjoying in the city of Quincy. The proposed budget this year is $405.8 million, an increase of about 8.8%. Three-year average of about 6.1%. The largest increase is dedicated to the new collective bargain agreement for all our citywide employees. 61% of the budget increased direct rates to those employee costs. And also, as you know, we're going up on the debt service the next few years, in large part due to the offset on the pension obligation bonds, and we'll get into that a little bit Some of the highlights, as some of you probably heard, Chief Jackson and the administration announced a new plan for the distribution of the fire apparatus in the city of Quincy. As you know, we have eight stations, and currently we have three ladder trucks, one rescue, and eight engine companies across the city. And back in 1990, the fourth ladder truck was taken out of service and never went back. And as we continue to grow as a city, as we become stronger economically, we felt it was important to put the fourth ladder truck back, and that is going to Hausneck, where it was. Additionally, the chief has a plan to move some other pieces around, including adding a ladder truck to the West Quincy Station, which would be taken from the Wallaston Station, and moving the rescue truck to the Wallaston Station. Rescue truck responds to every call, and actually, Wallaston is truly the center of the city, so it's more efficient for that to happen. And the chief received strong support from his command staff, but also from the local 792 leadership. Everyone seems to be pleased with the manpower changes and additions. As we said the other day, when we talked about this, the safety of the public, the residents, and the safety of the firefighters is paramount. And the more manpower you have on these pieces, the better chance of no injuries and no fatalities. So we look forward to July 1 implementation, and I thank you, Jackson, for his good work on this. Additionally, in the budget, you'll see an additional crisis response specialist in the police department. That is grant reimbursable. We thank District Attorney Morris. He was involved initially with the key position. Chief Keenan has been excellent in his leadership of the department and recognizes some of the challenges with the mental illness cases that we have out there, that sometimes our police officers are not quite equipped to handle. So having this into the budget really is going to be a big help to those that need service on the street. Our new library director, Salis Lyman, has requested two archivists. As you know, we're an old city. We have a lot of stuff, and that stuff needs to be taken care of, needs to be catalogued, preserved, and she's moving forward on that. And I think this will be her first budget season, so it'll be nice to her when she arrives. We also have an additional staff member, the Recreation Division, we're looking at. As you know, we have pretty incredible playgrounds, open spaces that are in great shape, and we try to match that with great programming. And I think our Recreation Department does a phenomenal job, as well as a lot of the nonprofit recreational leagues that use up a facility as well. While I'm on that page, I do want to say a general thank you to Chief Keenan. This will be his last budget this year. He'll be retiring in June after 40, more than 40 years of service and 15 years as chief. So we certainly thank Chief Keenan for his incredible service. Additionally, we've seen some increases in the waste collection, which is no surprise, but the recycling costs have gone up dramatically. That will be reflected in the budget. We are reducing the snow and ice budget. As you know, some of you have been around, the snow and ice budget, when I first took office, was $300,000. It was $300,000 for about 20 years, because under the law, it's one of the few items that a city can overspend on and make up for it later. As you know, over the last several years, we've incrementally increased that, and after the last few years, we feel this is the year we can cut a little bit based on the new trends and weather. That can change, as we know, at any time. Multiple bargaining units in Quincy Public Schools have also been handled. That's in the budget, and I will say that the school committee has done some great work. I know that this council passed a resolve last year, looking at salaries across the board, and we're making market adjustments, not only in the city side, on the department heads and managers, but the school side, the paraprofessionals, the food service workers, and others are receiving market adjustments to stay competitive with the districts around As we know, in the next slide, we talk about revenue each year, and I know you know this very well, but I certainly want to talk a little bit about it for those that are watching at home. We collect our revenue from different sources. We call local receipts, which includes, local receipts includes excise tax, building fees, meals tax, permit fees. Somebody gets a license at Vital Statistics. All those things go into the general fund under the category of local receipt. State aid, we had a pretty good increase this year, and I certainly want to thank Speaker Mariano, Senator Keenan, Representative Ayers, and Representative Chan, and also Governor Haley of the administration for doing a good job and seeing a good increase in our state aid this year. As you know, a good chunk of that is Chapter 70. Not listed here is also the Chapter 90, which is money for roadwork that helps us get some of that roadwork done that we need. As you know, based on your vote not long ago, we're undergoing $100 million road improvement program. So when we normally in the past just depended on the Chapter 90, we now have a robust program here, so we're getting a lot of roadwork done, which is great, and I'm sure each of you are pleased with that as well, because I know that continues to be one of the constituent requests from folks. So the state aid and local receipts are strong. We've got good liquidity. The higher interest rates also helps us with that, with our city funds. The meals tax are trending very high. It should be a record high, which is great. It's bounced back. Excess tax, tax levy capacity is approaching $50 million, and I think that's an important note to emphasize, and I'll get into that in a little bit. The next slide speaks of the pension obligation bond, and I'm truly grateful to this body for seeing the wisdom in passing that, because the timing on it could not be better. It was absolutely perfect timing. There were other communities and cities looking at it around the same time, including Springfield, and as soon as the rates started to change, they backed off because the savings weren't there once it shifted. So again, I thank this body for help with that. We scored a great rate, and as you all know, the reason we did this was, you know, we had a high unfunded liability in our pension system. We were at 43% funded at the time. Under the state law, we had to be fully funded by 2040. And if you looked at the chart, which I think is on the next page, if we didn't do this, you see that purple line. Each year, the bill to us from the retirement board would consistently go up every year. So by doing what we did, we'll save approximately $130 million over that timeframe. It's huge. Now, the next few years, the debt service line is going to go up accordingly, then, as you see, it flattens out, whereas that curve in the purple line would have been a challenge each and every year. Essentially, when the retirement board doesn't get the returns, it's made up for. They bill the city or the local, depending on what jurisdiction it is, the bill goes up. So again, thank you for the great work, the help with that. And I should say, Chris Walker, my Chief of Staff, Eric Mason, the entire team in Minnesota Finance was a huge part of the great hard work on that. So we go to the next slide on debt service. It includes what we just discussed, includes a number of school projects, road improvement programs, seawalls, downtown work. As we know, we've built a number of new schools, and next one up is the Squonham Elementary School, which we now have an architect and OPM on board, so we'll be coming back to this body in the near future. But also, you know, the SBA reimbursements for those, FEMA reimbursement, state grants, CPA reimbursements, and the DIF reimbursements helps. So actually, about 53% of that debt is carried by these non-property tax levy sources. I also want to thank Congressman Lynch and the federal delegation, because we have been the recipients of some of these federal grants. In course, the last few years, we saw CARES money and Opera monies and CDBG increases through the planning department, which helps see greatly, particularly nonprofits, but also the great work that so many departments do in the city. So that's the debt service. Next one up is new growth. We've enjoyed $31.5 million in the last five years, which is, as the state's, more than five times the state average. It's three to six times more than comparable cities in most cases, and it really provides the foundation for fiscal stability. When people talk to me about, you know, construction and economic development, I speak why it's so important. A city can't be stagnant. You can't be stagnant. You've got to be moving forward, or you're going to be taking a step backwards. And when you look around communities not far from us, and you go to the next chart, you'll see some comparisons to some of our neighbors, but also to some of the cities our size and comparable in demographics, and you'll see the new growth numbers. It's pretty significant here in the city of Quincy, as it is in the city of Newton, but we have been doing extremely well with that. New growth means it's not only a new building coming online, but also just the increase in value. You capture that new growth for the levy. Next line, the property taxes. This is also one that I'm sure you get questions about. I get questions about when I'm out and about, and I usually respond to people that, out of the 351 cities and towns in Massachusetts, we are smack in the middle on tax burden. But I would argue that we're right at the top on services provided to the residents of the city. And we can talk about the services in our schools. We can talk about the sewer department going in the middle of the night and pumping out a sewer backup in a basement. Many towns don't provide that service. Excellent trash pickup, excellent plowing, library services, veterans services, council on aging. I could go on and on. When people call, they get a response. Our departments do an incredible job. So we're nearly $50 million under the tax limit. Well, you may have been reading around us. I think Hingham was the latest with it looking at two and a half override, just on an operational budget. We've seen cities like Somerville have a Prop 2 and 1 override to Midone School. So we continue to have a strong economy, and we are catching up with a lot of infrastructure that was ignored for decades, and this allows us to do that. So I'm proud of where we're at, and I thank this body for the work that you do on this issue as well. The next slide. This is the one that many people, when I speak to about, don't fully understand it, but excess levy capacity. You go back to Prop 2 and 1/2, Proposition 2 and 1/2, which devastated municipalities across the state back in 1980 with the cuts in the early 80s. Under that law, cities and towns could go up 2 and 1/2% of the total levy each and every year, and it wasn't on individual bills, it's on the total levy, the total combined industrial, commercial, and residential properties. And we have not consistently taxed to the max. So again, we'll be leaving almost $50 million on the table this year that we will not be taxing, that we're eligible to tax under Prop 2 and 1/2. And I know it sounds a little bit snarky to say we could be taxing more, but we could. So to think about all we're getting done across the city, as I alluded to, the new school construction, the fixing of the schools, the new public safety headquarters, the new seawalls, the park and playground, incredible improvements, on and on, we're doing that, and we still have excess levy capacity, which is remarkable. And we did convince the bonding agencies that to look at this as an insurance policy, if we ever had a major catastrophe where we had to deal with funding shortfalls, we could tax a little bit more to get through that crisis, and they tended to agree with us on that issue. So we're proud of that fact as well. I did want to take a minute before I go to the Capitol Plan, because I think those are separate orders. I want to follow the guidance here, but I do want to take a minute and thank the department heads, Chris and Helen, my entire staff, all the department heads, all the department managers and appointees who love the city, that work very hard each and every day. They treat the public well with respect and get the job done. Also want to thank our city employees all across the board who get it done each and every day. And additionally, I want to thank members of the boards and commissions. I know some of these councils go sometimes to those meetings, and sitting on some of those boards is not easy. They caught between, was between neighbors on issues, and they do that without compensation. So I want to thank our members of the boards and commissions out there as well. With that, I would be happy to take any questions on this portion.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to open up to my colleagues here. If you have any questions, comments.
Pretty simple here tonight, Mayor, for this group. Mayor, just to elaborate a little bit on your pension bond liability that we had a few years ago, it was two years ago, you hit the sweet spot. You hit the perfect timing of that rate not going up. As soon as you missed, if we had missed the boat on that and this body didn't approve it, we will be looking at a lot, at least double on the rate. Just off the top of your head, can you give us an amount that we would have saved because we did it two years ago today?
Yeah. If we had not done it and we had to pay what was coming down the line through 2040, we'd be paying $130 million more. So by doing that major $475 million bond, though, some argue that, you know, you're putting a lot of debt on. Well, it was an unfunded liability, so you get whacked on the unfunded liability in a sense from those that look at the books. So this deals with that unfunded liability. Yes, the debt service goes up, but overall, for city budgets going forward, the estimate is about $130 million.
$130 million total. What would be the amount that we would save this year on taxes for the average tax house of, what is it, $600,000 house? What would be the savings last year and now going into this year? What would you, do you have a number?
As I described, the rate, the debt service is kicking in over the next few years. It's being layered in. So we're going up a little bit. It's a few years out when you hit the flat line. That's where the real savings begins.
Mayor, obviously, we've dealt with 111 inches of snow in 2015. We've dealt with a huge amount of flooding in 2018. We dealt with the COVID-19 pandemic in 2020. We're here in 2023. We have, knock on wood, catastrophic events that have come to us that we've had almost every two- to three-year gap. Obviously, you have an 8.8 increase this year. Teachers' contracts have been settled, and we're moving forward here. On the teachers' contracts, did you put the funding in retroed back for this past 3%? Is that in the budget?
That was built into the existing current school budget. We built in, when you approved the budget last year, we built it in for that school department side, for all the units, not just the teachers, but also on the city side. We did that as well.
So it was all in there.
For those that weren't settled for last July 1.
Okay. Mayor, I'd like to recognize Council McCarthy. Right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Just a solid, a solid budget. The department heads have been great, and speaking for Ward 1, they're there, the place looks, the whole city looks beautiful. These improvements, Furnace Brook and public buildings, staying at it and staying at it and staying at it. You've done a great job. As President DeBona mentioned, we hit COVID the last three years. It was turmoil everywhere, and we kept going, which was amazing. People were still working, and when you go through this 2024 budget presentation, it's full of positives, which I think the residents realize, that when they ride around the city and look at the parks, and look at the buildings, cemetery, safety center, I could go on and on and on, just in Ward 1, so much has got done down there. It's just been, you know, a privilege to work with you folks, Helen and Mr. Walker and all the department heads, in getting things done and moving forward. So it's a great, it's easy, I guess, to be up here, and we deliberate about a lot of things, and we will, but it's easy when we have leadership that's paying attention and doing the right thing. So thank you very much.
Thank you, councilors. I understand my staff hears from you on a regular basis, so we'll keep it going.
How many times did you call him today?
A lot.
Do you believe this budget reflects the values of the community?
Yeah. Great job.
Any of the councilors? So we have our, Madam Clerk, we have our number one agenda item, appropriation fiscal 2024 general fund budget. Can anyone entertain to refer to finance and advertise? I'd like to recognize Council Phelan. I'd like to recognize Counsel Phelan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to move the budget to the Finance Committee and Advertise.
Motion made by Counsel Phelan to move it to Finance and Advertise. Do I have a second? Seconded by Counsel Liang. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. That goes into Finance and to be advertised. Second item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Number two, 2023-047, an appropriation fiscal 2024 sewer enterprise budget.
I'd like to recognize Counsel Phelan.
Could I have a motion to send it to Finance Committee?
Motion made by Counsel Phelan to go to Finance Committee and to also advertise. Do I have a second? Seconded by Counsel Andronico. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. That's going to go into Finance and Advertise. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Number three, 2023-048, an appropriation fiscal 2024 water enterprise budget.
I'd like to recognize Counsel Phelan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to move this to the Finance and Advertise.
Motion made by Counsel Phelan to move into Finance and Advertise. Do I have a second by Counselor Devine? Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. That goes into Finance and Advertise. Madam Clerk, next item on the agenda.
Number four, 2023-049, appropriation 2023 capital improvement plan, $4,500,000 for public buildings.
I'd like to recognize Counsel Phelan.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to move this to the Finance and Advertise.
Motion made by Counsel Phelan to move it into Finance and to also advertise. Do I have a second? Seconded by Counsel Liang. Any discussion on this motion? I'd like to recognize Counselor Mahoney.
Just a quick question. I know it says that this is for the Kennedy Center in North Quincy and associated public expenditures. Do we have to, if we wanted to kind of get more into depth into what those potential expenditures, do we have to do that now or can that be done when it's in committee?
Counsel Phelan, feel free to.
Yeah.
They'll have to come. They'll be, it will be part of a regular hearing.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure because it's, you know, it's just that we don't know really what it's for at this point, but I just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Yes, they'll be, these are all going to be part of the committee hearing process. So there'll be plenty of time for councilors looking for anything to get it. We'll also be putting out the schedule very shortly. The Clerk Committee has already sent a copy of the schedule. One of the dates we're going to have to change, something has come up. But the last date, June 7th, we're going to be changing that date. But Jen's going to be getting the schedule out and hopefully we can post it by Wednesday. That's what our goal is. But we'll be putting all of these in committee and we'll be having hearings on all of them.
Any other councilors? So motion made by Counsel Phelan, seconded by Counsel Liang for the appropriation of capital plan, 4.5 million to public buildings. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. That goes into Finance and to also advertise. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Number five, 2023-050, appropriation to $13,965 for Furnace Brook Golf Course Club House and Forbes Hill Park improvements.
I'd like to recognize Counsel Phelan.
I'd like to make a motion to put this to Finance Committee for a committee hearing at a later point and advertise.
Motion made by Counsel Phelan to put it into Finance and also to advertise. Seconded by Counsel Kane. Any discussion on this motion? I'd like to recognize Counselor Mahoney.
You know, when we do this presentation, when it comes out for the appropriation for the $13,965, if we could also have an update on the current status and finances of the facility as well, so we can see the, how we've been doing since we've taken over the golf course, that would be greatly helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
So we have a motion made by Counsel Phelan and seconded by Counsel Kane. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that will be moved into Finance and Advertise. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Number six, 2023-051, in order for the Coke Club Fund consolidation.
I'd like to recognize Mayor Koch that's standing in front of us still.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. My dad, as you know, was a public servant for a long time. In fact, he'd be 100 years old May 31st of this year. In May of this year, we're also celebrating the 75th anniversary of the Coke Club. In 1973, he established a permanent scholarship fund with the city of Quincy. He started giving out scholarships in 1959. Some of you may have been in the Coke Club, but you know, it was very cheap to join. You got a T-shirt and a hat. You marched to the Flag Day Parade and you get a hoodsie at the end of the year. Whatever money they had left, they put into scholarship funds. So a male and female from each high school, each guaranteed a scholarship from the Coke Club Fund. In 1978, he created another fund called the Christmas Charity Program because he, him and my mother, Simone, are very involved in helping people indeed at Christmas time. And since that time, there's a lot of agencies that do a lot of great work around Christmas time. We, as a family, felt that the way the cost of college tuition is going, we felt we should consolidate the Christmas fund into the scholarship fund thereby providing larger grants to these kids that graduate from Quincy and North Quincy High School to help them with their college. So where it was established by the City Council in 1973, in fact, I was 10 years old. I was in a picture handing a check to Bob Foye and Alexander Smith, who was the auditor at the time, who I was the city treasurer. So the family agrees that this is the right move to make. So this will need council approval and I appreciate your consideration.
I'd like to recognize Counsel Phelan.
Mr. President, having played all the way from the little peewees all the way up to intermediate and Coke Club and the seniors, I played with the seniors too, I'd like to make a motion to pass this order.
So motion made by Counsel Phelan to approve. Do I have a second? Seconded by Counsel Harris. Any discussion on the motion? As a pointed privilege mayor, it's in your 75th year, is that correct, for a Coke Club? Thank you for all your support with that. I know I look at Dave Murphy of Natural Resources and his park crew with them. We're always down up at Quarry Hills and all these other parks playing with the kids and to see them getting their shirts and hats and playing on the ball fields, it's a great thing for the city to see it all over the place. So I thank you for all your involvement with the community with that.
Thank you, Ms. Counsel.
You know, I appreciate it, really do. So motion made by Counsel Phelan and seconded by Counsel Harris. We're going to have a rule call on this. Madam Clerk, please call the rule.
Counsel Andronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Devine.
Yes.
Counsel Harris. Counsel Liang. Counsel Mahoney. Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
President DeBarna.
Yes.
Nine members.
Nine members in the affirmative. An unanimous vote.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Madam Clerk, next item on the agenda, please.
Number seven, 2023-052, a resolve review of the potential.
I'd like to recognize Counsel Liang if I could. Go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I'm excited to bring this forward to us to start a conversation based off of previous conversations I've had with Shelley, Shelley Dean from the city as well as former City Councilwoman Creashan and just, you know, other folks that have brought this to my attention in the past about the fact that we, back in 2010, so 13 years ago, the state had provided to all municipalities in the state the opportunity to enter into what we all call, or no, being referred to as a stretch code. And essentially what it does, it provides all cities and towns baseline sort of standards to operate based off of, to ensure that any development that happens really is with an eye towards energy efficiency, right? And the direct result of that is not so as to, of course, build a better green, you know, city and town, but also to, I think, very obviously create saving opportunities, not just for residents, but developers as well who are developing in cities and towns. And so for the last 13 years, we as a municipality have opted into that, I believe, along with all cities across the Commonwealth. But more recently, there has been an opportunity to opt into, even further, sort of, not strict, but more opportunities to take advantage of these green opportunities in a form of specialized stretch code. And so not every city and town has opted into that necessarily. I don't know what that would mean for us as far as cost savings go. I want to make sure that if we were to enter into it, that any cost burdens are very apparent and brought to our attention as well. And so prior to really jumping into and opting into anything that would impact not just development for individual homeowners, but for developers across the whole city, I want to make sure that we have a robust conversation about that and have all the information brought to us. And so that's how this resolve came together, is to make sure that we understand historically how we got to this point and then understand the impact of this moving forward because it will set the standard, I hope, for development moving forward. This tracks very closely to things that are important to me when it comes to redevelopment of the city and bringing new folks into the city as well to speak to what the mayor just spoke about, about the growth in the city. And of course, want to make sure that we do it in a way that is sustainable for us and for the future of the city. And so I'm really excited to present this resolve and I thank my colleagues in the council, particularly my fellow counsel-at-large, Ann Mahoney, because she's been championing this behind the scenes with me as well. And so not just to you, but to my other colleagues who are joining this, I appreciate it. And I would like to make a motion to approve and move this to both environmental and public health and community engagement.
So motion made by Counsel Liang to passage and environmental and, what is the other?
Community engagement.
Community engagement.
Yes, please. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Do I have a second? Seconded by Counsel Mahoney and on the second, on the motion.
If we could just add a friendly amendment to it where we could add in to include Shelley Dean as the Energy and Sustainability Director as well as non-governmental people throughout the city to be able to be part of this conversation so that we're kind of having a round table of review and making sure that we're bringing back the presentation so that we can fully understand the impact in our community.
So that is in a form of a friendly, we'll do it as an amendment, we'll vote on it first and then we'll do it as amended. Okay? So that is amended by Counselor, to put Shelley Dean in that language. Do you have that, Madam Clerk?
As well as, as well as non-governmental people.
And non-governmental people. Do you have that in there? Do I have a second on the amendment? Seconded by Counsel Liang. Any discussion on the amendment?
Not on the amendment, but.
We're going to, we're going to, we're going to vote on the amendment first. We have a second. We'll vote on it, we'll go back around as amended, okay? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed on this? Okay, we have a, the ayes have it and that amendment is finalized. Now we'll go back to the regular motion, which was by Counsel Liang and seconded by Counsel Mahoney. Are you finished? I'd like to recognize Counsel Devine.
Thank you very, thank you very much. I just wanted to, the specialized stretch code is extremely advanced, even the regular stretch code is advanced to the point where many building inspectors have difficulty with it. So we'll make sure that we do our due diligence here and make sure that we, there's going to be a lot of homework towards this because this is, it's very, very complicated. So we're going to need a lot of information for this. All right? Thank you very much and I'm glad we're pulling this up and we're going to look at it and we'll have to very diligently look at it and make sure it's the proper way to go.
Thank you, counselor. Any other councilors? I'm just happy to support this and thank you Counsel Liang, Counsel Mahoney. Happy to co-sponsor this with you guys. I think you've done a great job on the work. The biggest thing on this one was is the savings for a homeowner can average around $500 per year for utilities under the current adopted stretch code. So any type of savings that we can do for the taxpayers of the city and the homeowners and, you know, the residents of our city is going to be a huge plus. So anything that we can do for them to provide the burden of the taxes that they have, since the rates of almost everything that you can think of has gone up and with the inflationary rate and all these other things and tangibles. But we have a motion, is any of the councilors? Motion made by Counsel Liang, seconded by Counsel Mahoney for passage as well as into environmental, public health, and a community engagement. Madam Clerk, please call the rule.
Counsel Andronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Devine.
Yes.
Counsel Harris. Counsel Liang. Counsel Mahoney. Counsel McCarthy. Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
President DeBarna.
Yes.
Nine members.
Nine members in the affirmative. And it passes, motion carries. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Number eight, 2023-053, a gift for $600 from various donors to DARE.
Someone entertain a motion to approve? Motion to approve made by Counsel Phelan, seconded by Counsel Andronico. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the rule.
Counsel Andronico. Counsel Kane. Counsel Devine. Counsel Harris. Counsel Liang. Counsel Mahoney. Counsel McCarthy. Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
President DeBarna.
Yes.
Nine members.
All nine members, motion carries. Is that it for our agenda items, Madam Clerk?
It is.
It is. Approval of previous meeting minutes, we missed one on April 24th of 2023. Anyone entertain a motion to approve? Motion to approve made by Counsel Andronico. Do I have a second? Seconded by Counsel Kane. All those in favor say aye. The ayes have it. Let's go to May 1st, 2023, previous meeting minutes. Motion approved made by Counsel Phelan, seconded by Counsel Kane. All those, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. That's it for approval, previous minutes. Communication reports from Mayor, other city officers, and city boards. Madam Clerk, do we have any utilities?
Yes, I do have a utility request to refer to Public Works Committee for scheduling and advertising, grant a location Verizon, Oak Colony Ave at Bale Street.
Is that okay with Counsel Harris? Yeah, no. The utility is going into.
Public Works for scheduling and advertising.
Okay. Any other utilities, Madam Clerk?
That is it.
Any other communication reports from the mayor, other city officers, city boards? Anyone else? Unfinished business in preceding meeting. Moving on, reports of committees. We'll go with Counsel Phelan, Chair Phelan of the Finance Committee. Go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm requesting unanimous consent to bring out item number 202023-36, appropriation of $10 million for the state revolving fund and sewer and drainage improvement. A meeting was held of the Finance Committee on May 1st and there was a positive approval, eight members, eight members present, eight members voting in affirmative, there was a positive approval from the Finance Committee. So I would like to move, we were waiting for it to be advertised, it's gone through the advertising and everything like that. At this point, I would like to move that item, move for approval.
So 2023-036, it's $10 million for the sewer and drainage positive recommendation and a motion made by Counsel Phelan, seconded by Counsel McCarthy. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the rule.
Counsel Andronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Devine. Counsel Harris. Counsel Liang. Counsel Mahoney. Counsel McCarthy. Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
President DeBarna.
Yes.
Nine members.
Nine members in the affirmative. Motion carries and that is approved, $10 million. Do we have anything other in Finance?
Ordinance.
Of ordinance, yep. We'll go right into ordinance chair, Counsel, Chair McCarthy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a few items I need to get positive recommendation from out of the ordinance committee. Ward 4, Counsel Devine's Ward 2023-040, add a stop sign on Morton Street at Buckley Street. Positive recommendation, motion to pass.
Motion made by Counsel McCarthy. Do I have a second? Seconded by Counsel Devine. Any discussion on the motion? Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Andronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Divine. Counsel Harris. Counsel Liang. Counsel Mahoney. Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
President Dubonna.
Yes.
Nine members.
Nine members in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Also 2023 041, add stop sign on Morton Street at Carmen Street. Positive recommendation.
Motion made by Counsel McCarthy. Seconded by Counsel Divine. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Andronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane. Counsel Divine. Counsel Harris. Counsel Liang. Counsel Mahoney. Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
President Dubonna.
Yes.
Nine members.
Nine members in the affirmative. Motion carries.
And the last one, 2023 042, add stop sign on West Street at Carmen Street. Positive recommendation.
Motion made by Counsel McCarthy. Do I have a second? Seconded by Counsel Divine. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Andronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane. Counsel Divine. Counsel Harris. Counsel Liang. Counsel Mahoney. Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
President Dubonna.
Yes.
Nine members.
Nine members in the affirmative. Motion carries. Any other items, Counsel McCarthy? You good?
No, thank you, Mr. President.
Any other reports of committees? We're moving on. Presentation of petitions, memorials and remonstrance. I'd like to recognize Counsel Mahoney. Right ahead.
It's with great sadness that I wanted to talk about, um, a phenomenal person, Pamela Sawyer. She's from Ward Five and, um, she recently passed away. And I just want to keep her family, um, in our thoughts and prayers. Pam, um, she was, she was always in the playground when my kids were growing up and you would never know she was a grandmother at the time. You would have thought she was one of the kids' mothers. But she was also, she also ran a daycare and she was known to a lot of people as Nana Pam. But she was also somebody that as she got older, she, and she was not old by any means. She was a young spirit at heart. We, I would have thought Pam was gonna be here for 100 years, um, at least. You'd see her, um, in all the senior Olympics and you'd question whether or not she was sneaking into the senior Olympics because you didn't think she was a senior. She was young at heart. She danced in tap dancing and Zuma. And in her later years, she was very social and spent time with her friends. But her greatest passion in life was with her family and her grandchildren. She was the devoted mother of Danielle Pamero and her husband Anthony of Ipswich, Allison Care and her husband Sean of Quincy into the late Brian Spring. Um, she just passed away recently and I just wanted to ask if we could keep her and her family in her thoughts and prayers because it was very unexpected for the, for the, the family. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Please keep your thoughts and prayers.
I do have a second one. If I could. This is, um, with great sadness, I also want to report, ask for people to think of Jill McGinnis Button. Um, she is, um, she is the relative of the Cullen family and she's also, I believe she's a cousin of Margaret the Forest. Um, Jill grew up in Quincy and she was, um, amazing young woman. Um, and she, for, for kids growing up to be aspirational for young sports kids. She was a defenseman, um, and recruited to Boston College and received a full athletic scholarship at Boston College where she was named to the hockey all-scholaristic rookie team. And she helped bring, bring the Eagles to the, to the Bean Pond Championship in the first time in the history of the school. Um, following graduation, Jill, um, was prof, she played professionally, professional hockey for two years with the ZSC Lions in Zurich, Switzerland. And in her following and her playing career, she served as the director of girls' hockey for the Boston Lady Rangers and the assistant coach at St. Anselm College University and Boston University. She went on to enjoy a fantastic career in IT and, um, became the wife and has two young children. Jill, um, is, like I said, she's the, she's a family member with the Cullen family and although she, she later grew and she, she moved to Waymouth, but she was a Quincy kid that was just in, just very impressed, impressed with her background and died way too young and was leaving a seven-year-old and a five-year-old. So if we can keep her and your thoughts and prayers as well and her family, I greatly appreciate that. It's just, it's just a very sad loss for, um, the Quincy community and for young girls who are, are hoping to grow up to be hockey players. Jill was definitely that person that people, um, could look up to. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel Mahoney. Any of the councilors? Just like to recognize Mary Whitfall over here from the Patriot Ledger. She just told me a little while ago she might be moving on from her post. Um, I look back at Chris Walker, Pat Ronan, Sean Carter, Aaron Turney, and even Jessica Tarant, she filled in for a couple times over here for a little while and, um, it's been a few years. And I want to thank you for really having some great articles, um, in the paper just recently on our, our former colleague Brad Kroll, um, him going through the kidney transplant and, um, his recovery and his, the Mother's, Mother's Day one that you just did in the newspaper was very touching. Um, without yourself and the Quincy Sun and, uh, QA TV that has us on here, you know, he, we got the word out to get that kidney transplant. And he did, he found a match. Um, I believe he was an ironworker from Local Seven that used to be out holding signs for Brad Kroll and, um, it just so happened to be the match. Uh, he had moved to New Hampshire, but he was in touch with the article that you may have written and he says, oh, I, I'll go and, and that was the match of it all. So you just never know how important the newspaper, um, still is to, to today's society. Um, and then you put it on the Twitters and the, and the social media sites as well as, um, it really got the word out there. So we really appreciate all your hard work that you've done, um, here in the city council chambers. Um, it was really nice to, you were able to do, use Zoom and, uh, listen to us on the live stream from QA TV and been able to write some of the articles too. So, um, technology has really taken in and, uh, we're really gonna miss you. We wish you the best.